You're on.
Okay, we will start the parent involvement hearing. Purpose of the hearing is to discuss, consider, and receive input on the parental involvement policy. Public will be given an opportunity to present information and opinions on a proposed parental involvement policy attached to our policies. Any comments or discussion?
No recommended changes to the policies from our attorneys at this point. So unless there's anybody else that would have a burning desire to change our parent involvement. It's just a state requirement, you have to have the hearing and allow public access.
Brian, any burning desire? Not with the in regards to parent engagement, no. All right. If no comments or requests, we'll close that hearing. And we will open the hearing for student fees. The purpose is to discuss, consider, receive input on the proposed fee policy. Public will be given an opportunity to present any information on and opinions regarding the policy. Discussion, comments?
Student fees report varies a little bit from last year because we didn't have a fourth quarter, obviously. And that's when a lot of activities sort of taken place, or especially in the elementary where field trips and that kind of stuff. So biggest difference in them are, I will total those up and put them as part of this meeting. But I did include the student fee collected each one of the buildings, so. In the regular agenda, all you really do is you just approve this and then as far as the report and then approve the policy for next year. So there's no part to that.
Any comments or questions? Hearing done, we will close that hearing. And we will call the meeting to order. Scout of committee schools is partnership with parents, students, and the community is committed to educate students to become skilled, knowledgeable, and responsible citizens in both of society. Notice that this meeting was given in advance according to state law by giving notice to the meeting to the public. Notice that the meeting was also given in advance to all members of Board of Education. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Did you hear us now?
Well, at least I can.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, lead us on.
Uh, we will proceed and this meeting has been preceded by advanced notice and it's hereby declared to be an open session. A copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the front of the meeting room. I will entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
They moved to seconded, discussion?
Nothing really out of the ordinary. Budget spends are 500%. The receipts are up, so. Finances.
Okay, Sally, call the roll.
Robbins.
Yes.
Lanusa.
Yes.
Yes. Misha.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Simran.
Yes.
Bobbercheck.
Yes.
Hey, we still can have a public forum. I don't see any members of the public here, but if there are comments later, they would be held to five minutes. Okay, we'll move on to policy. I would move to accept the 2019-2020 student fees report and reaffirm the student fees policy for the 2020-2021 school year. Sir, second. Move to seconded, discussion?
No, just thank the principals for their work in coordinating all those fees and making sure that that students who ask for waivers get the right work. It's work that happens all year long, you know, so thank the administrators in those buildings for keeping most fees straight. Been pretty clean in our audits, and that's not always the case when you're dealing with just cash like that. Thank you.
Comments?
Ready?
Go ahead. Nina?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simran?
Yes.
Bobbercheck?
Yes.
Robbins?
Yes. All right, harassment policy?
I'll make the motion to reaffirm the bullying and harassment policy for the 2021 school year.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
The only thing that I would say about this policy is that there's, there are going to be some additions to it because the state is taking some stance on the use of, or student use of mace and having, like when they have self-protective equipment that they bring, they have to check it in. So this, this policy won't necessarily change, but the handbooks could change as far as how that stuff is regulated in the building. And so you saw in some of those policies that are out there right now, the policy recommendations, some references to some herbal oils and those kinds of things. And so while it's not necessarily bullying and harassment, it does follow that same student discipline. So.
So even though it's a, could be a protective device, it could be also used as.
But those are separate. This is, but not separate in how it's performed.
Okay, so if they have to check it, how can they defend themselves?
Hopefully, they shouldn't have to defend themselves in school, you know? That's the whole purpose of supervision. But I think it's mostly like if kids carry it outside in the evening and after practice and, you know, so.
Okay, any other comments? Sally?
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simran?
Yes.
Bobbercheck?
Yes.
Robbins?
Yes.
Lanusa?
Yes.
Okay. First readings?
I'll make the motion to approve the first reading of the new and amended policies as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion?
We have a couple of firms, three firms really, that provide input into school policies. The NASB manages our policy manual. And so Jim Louie takes all that information and whenever I get a policy recommendation, I send it to him. And he codifies it to our codes to keep our book up to the right codifications. There are really two systems, ones in the thousands and ones in the hundreds, and ours is in the hundreds. And so I sent him all the policies up to date or to this date that I have. He's going to review them. Some of them are the same, basically. You'll see that there are three new policies in there. One is in reference to Nebraska's launch. And one of them is to some temporary waivers for rules and regulations in connection with COVID-19. And then also some changes, you saw the one for the marketing of essential oils and that kind of thing. There's some vaping that's coming at us, so I think it all comes into those, that's it. There are some revisions to some policies that are out there. The reason for the first reading is you get a month to review them and look at them and say, okay, I don't understand this, tell me why. But our attorney is writing, we used to be school administrators' policies. They were all over the place and now it's pretty much you have attorneys writing for you to make sure that you stay in compliance with statutes and what you're legally permitted to do in schools. So there's one on weapons, searches, and seizures, one on bus safety. And then the last one is expansion of concussion awareness. And then policy 502, it has to do with non-resident students. So, Title IX. The legislature will go back into session promising some more changes, okay? So let's see how they come through with their promises. But as of right now, these are the policy recommendations for.
They will definitely add more changes. Okay? Yeah, there's a lot of pages there to read through, there were. And it gets tiring reading through all that, especially in legalese.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
One of the practices that we will, and this is in the next one, is that you'll see that rather than us try to summarize the policies ourselves in handbooks, now our administrators make the recommendation, they say, see policy so-and-so. Because if the administrators amend or modify that policy, now you got two versions. And so a parent could go on and say, well, the handbook says this and your policy says this. And so we've stopped trying to use the handbook as a, as another voice box since. Because for years, board policies were never really available to the public unless you went to the superintendent's office and got them. Now we put them right on our webpage and they're searchable so parents can see them. And so it makes it a lot, the handbooks can be lesser because parents have access to what policy. I need more information than I need. Like Rich said, it gets to be pretty hard to read.
It does. Okay, other comments? If not, Sally, call the roll.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simran?
Yes.
Bobbercheck?
Yes.
Robbins?
Yes.
Lanusa?
Yes.
Yes. Misha?
Yes.
All right. Handbook.
I'll move to approve the 2020-2021 handbook revisions as presented.
Second. Okay. Any discussion?
I asked the principals to do, rather than give you a handbook to read through the whole thing, is just, just to highlight the changes for each one of the handbooks. And then our handbooks are mostly online now. And so we have a few parents who request a paper copy, just refer to the online copy. And so you'll see the changes in there. There's a lot more in the rural schools to try to bring, bring those into alignment with, with our current practices in early buildings, but so there's more changes in the rural schools. The elementary doesn't have any, the middle school has a couple changes in it, in the community service and and high school has some changes in their bell schedule because they're moving to an A period a day with the new addition to the high school. And then there's some other processes that are further outlined in the staff program for student management. Jim has one in the high school activities handbook because we're moving from seven classes to eight classes. That is to, our current policy calls for passing six classes to be eligible because we're moving to eight, okay, which means that if they would pass six classes a semester, they'd have 240 credits of the 255, okay? And with the eight classes that they could fail to, and which brings it kind of in alignment with practices in other schools. But, you know, again, if you guys do struggle in a class, you know, we're struggling too. They're not eligible, so that eligibility list fluctuates so much from week to week, the students up or down.
Yeah, I would, that's, that was one of the things I have questions on was the eligibility piece.
So they're still having to pass two, but they'll, they'll take eight instead of seven classes now. They're still have to pass six.
I was just saying, if they're passing two, we got a problem. Okay. All right.
Jim, I don't know if you care to speak on that? I know you're on.
Yeah, that, yeah, when you cleared that up, that it basically brings us in line to what we used to have as well when we were on block scheduling, where we took four classes and now we're taking eight classes. Students could not be failing too, so that, that's the same scenario. We were kind of with seven class period day, we were kind of in between those two. And, you know, for a number of students, while we don't want any of our students failing classes, you know, taking eight classes, we know, especially with some of our students who struggle with language and things like that, from week to week, that could be an issue. So giving them a little more leeway and, and providing the intervention and support to get them back up, I think, is, is really important. So that's, that was a recommendation from my coaches, which I agreed upon.
Okay.
That's all I have.
We can tie it for a year and if it doesn't get us the results we want, you know, then we can revisit it, but.
I, I think you nailed it in saying that, hey, we want our students to succeed in the classroom. Again, activities are important, but it's more important that we're getting the education that we're trying to set for the standard. And so if we need to help them get back on track, then that's what we need to do, but. Okay? Any other comments? Nope. Sally?
Simran?
Yes.
Bobbercheck?
Yes.
Robbins?
Yes.
Lanusa?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
All right. Activity passes?
Make the motion to approve the admission prices and activity pass rates as recommended. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion?
If you remember, the admission last year in the central conference went from $5 adults to six. And so like the other schools in our conference, we went to six for adults, but we left our adult pass rate the same for those people who, who purchased passes. So at least for the home activities, there was no increase. And senior citizens, the same, we had to move to six for them. And student rate stayed the same, they didn't increase. So this year, we got a pretty good balance in our activity fund and Jim's done a good job with that. But we recommend, we missed a quarter of the year. And so we're recommending under the current situation that we have with some people being laid off work, not putting any more hardship on people who want to attend activities. You know, it seems like if you can get them to the activity, they spend twice as much of the concession stand. So it's not the admission that's going to pay for our revenues all the time, so.
Yeah, that's true. Okay, any other comments? Sally?
Bobbercheck?
Yes.
Robbins?
Yes.
Lanusa?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simran?
Yes.
Okay, school lunch. I'll move to approve the 2021 breakfast and lunch prices as recommended.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been seconded. Discussion?
That program has been tapped pretty hard this year, especially, that's the one service that we kept going. And it's going way above where our numbers were a year ago with the number of meals that, you know, we're serving in our summer program now. And so starting June 1st, we're in the summer program. Our numbers stayed pretty much where they, where they dropped off for the first couple of days, but they're back up to that, that number that we were feeding throughout the, this fourth quarter of the school year. It's going to be interesting to see how that budget works out there, is money and people are funneling money toward that program. I mean, different entities, different groups out there. So it isn't that the program's not making money, it's that our costs are there for serving that many meals. We have a few more labor on this summer than we've had in the past because of that. You try to prepare 2,000 meals a day, it takes a little more labor than what we've had. So we pretty much have had a skeleton crew. So it'll be interesting to see as we go through these next months, how our budget, how our balances work, but how our budget works. With that, I see we, we may, just for conversation, as we open up and enter into this next school year, there's going to be some restrictions on how we open the school year. So kids' ability to be able to leave campus at noon, that's the whole purpose of our new lunchroom, is to try and get kids to stay. But at the same time, having kids go on and off campus is going to, is going to create some issues. So we may have to close our campus over noon. Good thing is that the high school kids have a lot more options and so but we, we may have to restrict kids leaving and coming back throughout the day where they go, so. Anyway, I recommend we keep the lunch prices the same, not to create more hardship with that 18% of the kids who pay for lunch. They would sit there.
Okay. Sally?
Yes.
Lanusa?
Yes.
Misha?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simran?
Yes.
Bobbercheck?
Yes.
Yeah, we have no resignation, which is good. New hire recommendations? Someone want to make that motion?
Make the motion to accept staff, or, sorry. Make the motion to approve new hire recommendations.
Second.
Discussion?
You'll notice Joel Creel back on there.
Yeah.
Was he the math teacher?
Yeah, he was math teacher at high school, yes. But he's going to become our newcomer ELL program person who will teach in this building.
You want to elaborate a little bit on what that means?
What that person will do, we have, we have students who by a priority score are, are labeled one, two, and three priority students. And the third group of priority students are higher intensive, need kids who either language or special education need more intensive support, more than we can give them, okay, right now. Level, level one are those kids who have some language but not enough to compete in the classroom. And so our push this year, our proposal to NDE through the priority schools is that we would create a morning class of non-English speakers. And they would be over here from, until noon, they go to high school at noon, they can take elective courses, but they can't go into the core classes until they have the English skills, okay? And so they can go up to the high school, they can be in musics and art and, and vocational classes, Spanish, they can be in elective classes. But we won't let them in the high school until they acquire enough language skills to compete, okay? The, the kids who would be in level two or one with at the help of testing, are kids who have some language skills but not, they either don't read, they may have academic gaps. They may have a variety of barriers that keep them from being able to compete in a regular classroom. So rather than slow the class down, we would have those kids come over in the afternoon. So we'd have a maximum of 20 kids and they would focus on reading, language, math over here, those, those subjects. And, but mostly in this building, we can control how much foreign language is spoken. In the regular buildings, I mean, I think it's good that kids have Spanish, but they need English to compete in high school. And so when they're with their friends all morning long and they're speaking Spanish or not speaking English, because it's too hard for us to control that, you know, what happens between classes, what happens even in classes. So our whole focus for those kids is get them pushed faster to speak English in an English-only setting. And Joel Creel is the person, he and Randy Zabidio will be the ones who will be in charge of pushing that program to get these kids up to speed, both of them have English and Spanish skills. So we think we can push that group faster, so.
So we'll have the level three in the early day and one and two in the afternoon?
Yep. And those classes will be limited up to, I think it's we're, we're going to shoot for 10 per group, which is 20 at a time over here, because I'd be reading for two hours and then math for two hours. And then because those are the two academic areas that we really have to push for those kids to get them, to get to where they can compete in algebra. They may have math skills, but if they don't have, if they don't have the English skills, it's still difficult to compete in math because you have to have some comprehension of English to know what the problem asked you to do. So it's our, it's our attempt to try to push kids while not putting them in an embarrassing situation where we, where we ostracize them for not speaking the language. If they can come over here, they can work on their language skills and get up to speed faster so that they can move at semester if they can, you know, so.
Okay.
Those classrooms will be ready by beginning of the school year.
Yeah, one's going to be the chapel and one, one will be the cafeteria, that's where those two classrooms will be. We don't know how else we can segregate them because trying to segregate them to high school just doesn't work, we've tried. And, you know, they might go into an ELL classroom for a period, but then, after that.
Okay.
So we'll see, I'm sure there'll be tweaks to that program. Jim and Stephen are both on, Dave Givens is on, they can speak about, I mean, it's a plan that we submitted by priority school because we had to submit a plan for how you're going to deal with those struggling students.
Any additional comments from people that are online?
No.
There's Nina.
Yeah.
Nina, do you have thoughts?
No. I, I think it's, it's great, this new program and, and I'm thankful for that. This new program and and I'm thankful for that.
Okay.
I would just say that, you know, we we spent a lot of time talking about how we can provide better intervention and service to those kids. And I think we have a good plan. Dr. Lofto really has done a really good job of researching and. And taking things from other plans that work well. And I I'm anxious to see how well it'll work and. And I'm excited about the people we're going to have leading the program too.
Okay. I think, you know, again, I I think it's a great idea and application, and it's going to take some learning, et cetera. But I guess I'd also like to have some type of an update some point, whether it's, you know, November, you know, timeframe, maybe, you know.
Well, I think we can do that throughout the first semester. You know, we're we're going to be all interested to see.
Yeah, exactly. So.
If you take, if you sent a kid to Howells, they would speak English faster than if you send them here. Seriously?
Yes, yeah.
Not because they have better teachers, but because there's not access to Spanish as as much, right?
They don't have a choice.
Right, right. And and so pushing them in that where they're not embarrassed to speak because the other people in the class, you know. People who are in those those programs say it used to be that if you had an accent that that people looked down on you. Not if you have an accent and you can speak two languages, you're twice as smart because you have two languages to draw from. But it's just getting them to that point where they don't feel stupid speaking anymore. And so.
Okay. Tyler Peterson is the new.
Special ed pair of.
Is he?
The elementary.
Experienced or just coming in new or?
No, he's got like 15 years experience as a pair in level three. So.
Okay.
So. And we do have some more pairs to hire, but.
As far as teacher openings, what do we have left?
High school library. And we have an elementary special ed that I'm not sure we can fill. We're we're still advertising, but there's no candidates. But Darley and Bill have worked out a plan where. Special ed teacher that they're going to send to the rural schools will be at least be back in the elementary for half a day. So we think we're going to fly with that. If that's what we got, so.
Okay.
Those those are the two openings right now. Yeah. Joel helped us a bunch by coming back. Because that program, we're going to struggle trying to find somebody who could manage that program.
Other comments, questions? Okay, Sally, wake up. I mean, call the roll.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Simone?
Yes.
Alfred Check?
Yes.
Robins?
Yes.
Lanusa?
Yes.
Nisha?
Yes.
All right, super tens report.
Summer, so there's no, no other administrative reports, but Dave did submit two reports for here, which I attached. One of them is our school improvement secret presentation, which is up tomorrow morning. And. So that's on the schedule for the six schools after report tomorrow. And the priority school report is also attached. Those aren't mine. Those are today's reports.
Then we don't have to go down and present anything this year?
No, because of COVID. So we still had to put together a report.
Yeah.
Joey and the two principals at the high school and Dr. Gibbons. They've been working all year on those reports throughout the year. So I did attach those. Summer school update, we're planning a three, three week, three hour a day, two session summer school. So there'll be a morning and an afternoon. Okay. We used to have to separate them, that one would be a title one and one would be a 21st century. But this year, we just got a call last week and. Got a $50,000 grant to pay for summer school. So we no longer have to separate it. We don't have to charge a fee. The state's watching us because there's only two of us doing it the way we're doing it. And so it takes a lot of protocol to try to make sure you keep people safe and. And so there's. Limited class sizes of 10, I think. We can go up to 12. We could, we could go up to 25, but. We're limiting 10 to 12. 12 is the magic number because of groups of six. If you've watched the protocols from the state where you group people and not more than six in a group. So we'll hire enough staff to make sure that our class sizes stay small. There's a lot of protocol for bringing kids in and out of buildings. It'll be three hours and then there'll be lunch. And for those kids who who want to stay and go to the afternoon school, then they can stay there and have lunch or they can leave and go around pick up their lunch. But there's a lot more in that. If you go out to lunch Nebraska, you'll see all the guidance. For summer schools. Just got the report today for reopening and the lunch for that. So. But graduation. Unless you have any other questions about summer school. We think we have enough staff recruited who are interested in doing this. The protocols for this summer, we're still working through a few of those, but as we get a final thing done for summer school. We'll go ahead and send you, email you a copy of that if you're interested in seeing how we're going to protect our staff and our students to make sure that we don't increase any spread. Okay? Graduation update, we'd like to host a Zoom meeting with our seniors and our parents next Monday night. And would like to invite the board members to sit in on that Zoom, whether you sit in from your home or whether you come here. What we're interested in is discussing dates, times. Parent wishes, student concerns. Okay? We were set on August 1st, 2nd that weekend, but I have since heard from people that. Our kids that are going into the military may leave August 4th. And so they have to quarantine for 14 days, so we would miss those kids. So I do want to see if there's an interest in us moving it up to the that weekend, two weekends before in July.
Because some of the restrictions will be lifted in July.
At that point? Yeah, because we have people going the 1st of July now. Okay? But as far as how we would, we would present our program, we could probably do it now and be safe. But we're not ready for it. Nor do I, am I sure that our families might be comfortable with this doing. I think another month goes, we have 31 active cases right now in Colfax County. So the 600 cases, 613 or 631, 600 have recovered. So if we can keep our case count down in this county and and kind of make sure that we behave ourselves and not do anything that will. Cause that spread, I mean, I think. Again, I'm open, I think, whether parents have any other ideas, asking them is part of the. Part of honoring them as parents of the kids. Okay? I'm sure we're not going to find a weekend that fits everybody, I'm sure, you know, but you know, if we can be aware of. And parents at least know that we did due diligence to try to find a weekend that works. We've got pretty much the protocol for the program, just simple things like our students sort of walk in six feet apart. The chairs would be six feet apart outside in the in the air. As far as audience, our audience can bring their chairs and we can sit them in groups of six anywhere on the football field as long as they're separated from each other. So we'd have enough staff to help make sure people stay apart and no large groups. We would put our, what we've done is we. Taken graduation pictures of all of our seniors as they came in and returned their iPads. And then we also on the, on a banner that would have their graduation picture. Also has all their honors for their senior year on that banner. And those will be draped on their chairs along with their diploma, because we can't hand anything to them. So but if, but when they go to walk and they go across the stage, we call them by name and they have their diploma, they would. Get their picture taken. It's just that we wouldn't be on the stage. There's just no wall for us. So you can't shake hands and you can't hand them anything. Now, if restrictions lift a little bit and we're able to do more than what we have currently planned to do, because we could do this now and be under. Be under the guidance that we're getting right now for groups. Because it's an outside ceremony, it's a lot different than if we tried to push all these people in the gym. So. Because the venue says you can't have over 25% of what the venue could hold. Okay? And with the football field, I mean, it's pretty much. We can hope whatever size group we get. Just got to keep the party.
What time are you planning that meeting in a week?
Talk to you. We're looking at Monday. We just decided today that my next Monday might be a good night. I know that. Virginia has less conflict on Monday nights and. And I think it'd be nice if we could have some board members at least connect with that Zoom. So what do you think about let them have the summer time and go at seven o'clock or something like that?
Fine.
If we do this in July or early August, that two o'clock timeframe that we would normally graduate might be pretty hot outside. And I would ask the parents, what would you prefer as far as the timeline would, five o'clock or in the evening, six o'clock? Would you like it under the lights? I mean, there's some options that we can do that to have that graduation. It's going to be different this year, so.
Or maybe they'd want it in the morning.
And maybe they'd want it in the morning.
Six in the morning.
You know, I mean.
Cooler.
You know, but I think at least if we ask them, you know, what their thoughts are. We might get 100 responses, you know, and maybe 100 different responses, but at least we asked the question. Knowing that we're trying to search for the best option for their kids and them. So if you don't care, I'll send out a letter to all the seniors and their parents this week. Asking them if they can attend or at least give their opinions to another senior parent if they can't attend. Okay? And then we'll follow it up with a follow-up letter saying these are the options and, you know. Questions or concerns about that? What time did you say? Seven o'clock on Monday night. And I'll set this room up, so if you guys come here, at least you'll be able to see, and we can Zoom with a lot of people. Been on Zooms with 400 people before, but I'm not anticipating that large of a crowd with our seniors and their parents. But I I would hope that the senior parents who want to give input would be on.
But it's a situation where you're, it's a situation where you're not, you know, you're not going to make everybody happy, but. There with there being so many options where it could be 10:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon or. And and trying to get some sort of consensus would be would be positive.
What I might do, if if it looks like it's all over the place at the advice of the board, the board could say. Let's get a group of parents together. Just know that we're going to work at this and try to get the date and time and everything worked out. Okay, that may be where we end up. Okay? So there could be a few board members and a few parents and try to get this thing, get a date and time kind of set up so we can get. Make sure they get their family notified.
And with it being outside, it might have best option in depending on whether the contingency plan too.
And like we could eliminate this, you know, I mean, that may be what we have to do because the contingency plan isn't, you go inside. Because that ain't going to happen.
No. Well, I'm, I guess I'm talking more the time, you know.
Time and date.
Yeah. That's my thoughts.
Other questions or concerns about that? Okay, so one of the other things that principals and I. Guys, I talked about is our kids got got no problem for their senior year. And one of the things that we could do is. By later in July or August, we could serve a senior meal. They could then see their graduation because you're not going to have a video outside. Okay? But we could have have a senior video, have a senior meal. It'd be like. It'd be nice like their prom, but not a prom because you can't have one. So if parents do something on their own, I can't know about it. I mean, I just. So getting kids together for a prom, you can't do. It says right in the guidance, no problem. Anyway, but a senior meal might be a way for us to be able to and have a nice decorated. Event for our seniors as as their last meal. The one thing that we did get, it it isn't like the Last Supper. But but it, but I would ask them if they would be interested in that because. The one thing that we would do at graduation, I forgot this, one thing we would do at graduation in addition to the. We would probably have speakers, the kids would probably have speakers, they would try to do a lot, but we would award. I think there's eight awards that they give. I don't know if it's senior athlete or 12th or whatever those are that would happen on honors night. Those would be announced on graduation. Okay, and we would have those, whether the plaques or trophies or what. They'd be on the stage, that person would be able to go to the stage, pick it up, get their picture. And so we would combine honors night and graduation for those. The other honors would be on their bank, on their list. On their. Senior meal. With this senior meal. My doctor play, they said we could, they would work with us on getting into the surgery that night. So they'd be the first event that actually took place in the new building. Which might be kind of cool for our kids. And with the size of that place, we could do a senior meal in there because you can have. We'd have tables of six, obviously, and then we'd have our staff serve. If the board members wanted to serve as well, because you don't have to count staff. In in your comp for how many kids are, or you know what your, what your occupancy is. But if if we did this and high school staff decided that they would serve and be there with the seniors for their senior meal. Or if the board member said, you know what, we feel like we'd like to be part of that. Wouldn't hesitate, but I think our role would be to serve and then kind of help coordinate that program. If any of the board members or administrators had any party boards for our kids that night, I'm sure we'll go through a little bit. What the next day looks like and how we'll march in and out and so on, but that'll be a way for us to, because we can't have graduation practice. So at least we'd be able to. And then when they would come in on graduation day, that's where they would assemble is in there. And probably the west, the east gym now, so the west gym, it's called the east gym. And because that gym should be ready. So between that and the commons area, we should be able to get our kids out to the field. I'm open to a lot of ideas.
So has the gym name officially switched? Have we made the switch?
No. Because that's not my role.
The old west gym. We need to pick a date when that switch is going to happen.
I'm going to encourage you not to do the old gym and the new gym because that's that's what. I think the east and west gyms could be, or if you wanted to put your name on it, with enough money, you could probably put your name on it, you know?
That's an investment, sounds like. I I made my.
Alfred Check Activity Center. I mean, come on.
Hazing Hall sounds is a lot catchier. That is a lot catchier. A lot catchier. There we go.
I want my name on a tombstone. That's all I want.
Okay.
But I do think that. I'm open to thoughts, ideas. Let's make whatever we can something special for our seniors and their families. The state's already saying you have to discourage. The state's already saying you have to discourage large family gatherings and all that, and so. So whatever we can do, you know, I think right, right now, because the because the directed health measures lifted. I'm not sure people will be fined for doing it, but it'd be a shame if we had a graduation and all of a sudden our council were crazy.
Yeah.
We got beer.
Don't want that. Don't want that.
So. Any other questions about that? If you do, give me a, give me a call this week, I'll make sure that we ask those questions if if any of you want to attend that meeting this soon. I'd love to have you on, whether you're on here or whether you're on at home, at least. Parents will see you. Other questions or concerns about that, I think I overstate my.
Yeah, I'm good on that. Give me other items to. All right, any committee question? So on the commencement, there, I'm assuming there's ways to. Film and 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 broadcast that, whether it's a Zoom or, you know, for.
Yeah.
For family members.
We will, we'll try to put it out over strike is what we're thinking, that it'll be out over strike. So that. People who don't attend could have. The option of watching it.
That would help keep the numbers down in that regard.
Other thoughts? You know, they always used to have like the rose where they give the parent the rose, can't do that, can't, I mean, it is. The restrictions right now are so much that. Even though they're giving it to their own family member.
Big head on the forest.
Sure.
My my sister gets a compliment.
But again, things could relax a little bit more. And we could make some changes as we move forward, but as of right now, we're pretty much planning that. We're going to operate like they tell us we have to operate, right?
Okay. Any committee reports? Our foundation met last Monday and I guess the main things to highlight is we're still tentatively planning our. Main fundraiser, the golf tournament on August first. I think contacting Sandy Sekman, if you'd like to. Donate or be a whole sponsor or participate in the golf tournament, that that is still. Being planned and then a lot of discussion was on our alumni honors committees, we're still wanting to. Do that recognition with commencement if possible, so we're, we're up in the air as far as that goes, but. We hadn't been recognizing three a year, but we had a. Had a vote to increase that this particular year to to five, there was a a large, or there was a. Larger number of quality candidates and so five distinguished alumni will be recognized. And we're just working through the details to figure out how to best do that with. You know, with everything up in the air. Dan Virginia, any, anything else?
We're still going to look at it, if they, if they want the meal and all that, you know, so. We'll. Will that kitchen be functional? Yeah, but as far as the kitchen, we wouldn't necessarily need a kitchen, it created it. So. But, yeah. Just depends on what we can get turned over by the fire marshal, you know?
I do have a couple correspondence items, I have two thank yous, one from Barb McGowan and the other from Crazy Cutzel, so. Again, very kind thoughts as far as representation for their. Years of service here and and again, we, they will definitely still be missed. In the upcoming years and appreciate all their efforts. Over the year, over their long term engagement with the district, so. Do appreciate that. If no new action, I would. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
I moved during the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Spin, moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye, any opposed, nay? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Nina, if you'll stay on for just a minute, I'm going to email you in July, I want to give you a heads up. In July, I'd like to propose an amendment to the budget, Chuck, if you'll pass those down. With the. Federal cares money that's coming into us. We've got an additional five hundred thousand dollars. And that's not going to work in this year's budget. And so if you look at the amended side, you'll see that I'm recommending that we amend this budget by five hundred thousand dollars. The cash comes from the federal government through the state. So I would, I would advertise this prior to the July budget.
I'm wondering if you're recording, I don't know if you want this to be on record.
Say that again.
Still recording.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, that's okay, because this isn't necessarily just private, but I just wanted to give you a heads up that this could be happening. And so the the public's going to see it before your July meeting, but I wanted you to have a heads up. That that this is. And the reason is to be able to accept that money. I still have to have a way of. Expanding that or receiving that money, so. No change in tax request, it's by five hundred thousand dollar increase in budget. If you have any thoughts between now and the next meeting, you can, you can share those with me, but. I think our allocation was five hundred and two thousand, we have a non-public consultation meeting to make sure that that there's no allocation. As far as what we're required to get to a non-public, so. Okay? Okay, with that, I'm going to stop the recording.